Welcome to the Board of Selectmen, Select Board Meeting, Monday, February 10th, 2025, in the Wacoit Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass. Broadcast live on local cable Channel 8 and 1072. Stream live on the Town of Mashpee website, It is 5:00 and we'll convene meeting in open session. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I thank you, and I'd like a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Okay, minutes. Review and approval of minutes, Monday, January 27th, 2025, regular session.
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Yes.
Michaela? John?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, 5:05, we can start now. We have a poll hearing, Petition 19542156, N-Star Company doing business as EverSource Energy, installation of conduit and cable in Hanhold Road, Main Street. Want to read the hearing? The Town of Mashpee Select Board-
Just got to read the hearing. Go ahead.
Will conduct a poll hearing on Petition WO number 19542156, dated January 8th, 2025, from N-Star Electric Company, DBA, EverSource Energy, to install 55 feet of 1-4-inch conduit and cable under Town Road and one new handhole to be labeled 1/74H1 at the base of the pole, 1/74, on Main Street, Mashpee, Mass. The proposed location is necessary to provide new electric service to a new sewerage pump station at 2 Great Neck Road North. Said hearing will be conducted Monday, February 10th, at 5:05 PM in the Wacoit Meeting Room of Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass. 0102649. You can submit comments and questions via email to selectboard@mashpemas.gov prior to the meeting date and time. Thank you, Michaela. Wayne?
Yes, there's been no opposition to this. There was only one other person, other than Town Properties. So they are not here tonight because of that.
Okay. I need a motion and a second.
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Oh, I need to, I'm sorry, I need to close the public.
If you could close the public hearing.
Thank you.
I don't know if there's anybody opposed.
Anybody else want to speak on this? Anybody, questions? No? Okay, I'd like a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second? John?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Now we need to vote?
A motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Michaela, do I have a second?
Second.
Tom?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Yes.
John? And I'm a yes. Thank you. 5:10, Public Hearing, Application for a New Annual Wine and Malt Beverage Package Store License, 20 North Street, UVA Wine Boutique, Michelle Menway.
Pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 138, Section 16A, the Select Board, acting as the local licensing authority for the Town of Mashpee, will conduct a public hearing on the application of UVA Wine Boutique, 28 North Street, Mashpee, Mass., 02649, for a new annual wine and malt beverage package store license. Said hearing will be held on Monday, February 10th, 2025, at 5:10 PM in the Wacoit Meeting Room at Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass., 02649. You can submit comments and questions via email to selectboard@mashbma.gov prior to the meeting date and time.
Good evening, ladies.
Hi. I'm Katie, this is Michelle. Last year, we came here to ask for an on-premise liquor license, wine and malt for UVA Wine Bar in the Commons, and we were given that license, which is great. So we were able to open UVA Wine Bar in late December. Not the best time to open a bar as we go into January, but we're so grateful. The welcome from the community has been phenomenal. We had a tremendously successful grand opening, and every weekend, Friday and Saturday, we've been full. So it's been a great opening so far. We've hired 10 people from the Cape to work at the bar, and we're going to be hiring more this summer as we go into the busy season. So one thing that has been made abundantly clear from our customers is that they want the ability to buy the wine bottles, the wine that we feature in the bar, to go. And obviously, with the liquor license that we have, we only have an on-premise liquor license. So we unfortunately have to tell them no. We explain to them why, that the, you know, the on-premise versus off-premise liquor licenses. And it's a disappointment, because essentially, what the customer ends up doing is taking a picture of the bottle and then goes on the Internet and tries to find it. We feature wines that you don't typically find in a traditional liquor store. And Michelle will talk about that a little bit more. But anecdotally speaking, I would say probably at least 25% of our customers have asked if they can buy the wine bottles. Some of them even grab them off the shelf and bring them up to the register, assuming that they can. And we've let-
It makes sense.
It does. And we've probably let thousands of dollars, you know, go by that we haven't been able to capture and keep in the community. So we've always wanted to open a retail shop, and we hopefully will get that opportunity to do that. And we feel that it's going to be a key component to the success of UVA Wine Bar, to be able to add that separate business, actually right next door at the Commons, for our customers, especially in the winter season, when it's, you know, a struggle for all businesses.
I know our licenses go by population, and I don't think we have one, a package store license, available at the moment. Wayne, do we?
I spoke to them earlier about that, and no, we do not currently have a license available, and we're waiting for the population numbers to come out to determine whether there's another one available. However, they mentioned that their legal person has some reference to that and probably can help answer a question in that regard. But we currently do not have one available.
Yes, it's our understanding that there is a bit of discretion by the municipality to appeal to ABCC to go over the allowance. So we can, we can, our legal counselors here can talk a little bit more about that, but just to give you a little bit more information about our concept, just so you're aware of it, so you can kind of picture it. The, our wine bar features 40, a rotation of 48 different wines by the glass. And they, we curate it, and it's primarily from lesser-known, smaller estate vineyards, and the wines are very difficult to find in retail, generally speaking, and even difficult to find on the Internet. And we want to be able to allow customers who fall in love with a wine to be able just to purchase a bottle. In other states, other states offer a hybrid type of model for similar establishments, because we are somewhat unique in that we're not like a full-service restaurant, and we're not like a bar. We're kind of this in-between, unique concept. So in Massachusetts, you have to have a separate business, a separate license, a separate location. So what we're proposing is a small boutique wine shop that has the ability to sell the wines that we feature at the wine bar, so that people who want to purchase a bottle of wine can go to the shop, and vice versa. People that are shoppers can also go to the bar to taste it before they actually invest more money. So that's, that's the general concept. And then, in addition to that, we're hoping to feature wine-related merchandise and, you know, other wine-related snacks. So it's going to be not just wine when you walk in. So it, it just so happens that there is this very small, less than 500-square-foot space, just a couple of doors down for us, that I think would be a perfect location for it, and it's available right now. So that's one of the reasons, the impetus for, you know, coming before you. And there is precedent and success in this business model across Massachusetts, but two in particular on the Cape. If you're familiar with the Brown Jug and Sandwich, it's a similar type of situation, as well as the Fessen Restaurant, which is in Yarmouth Port, with their sister business called Dunn &amp; Sons Wine, which is kind of located on the same street. So, thank you, but if-
And we will be getting our numbers for the population soon, so it wouldn't be too long to wait. I know you're anxious to do all this, but, I mean, we can't just sit here and give a license to you and then have another store come in and ask for a package store license also, on the same idea. We can't do that. And like I said, we usually have our numbers by now, so they're coming soon. It's just that we had a new planner come on board, and I'm sure he's going through all the data. So, I mean-
So are we wrong that there is no discretion by the Select Board to make changes to the-
I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to, I myself wouldn't want to do that, because then everybody would come and ask. We'd have our retail pot holders, marijuana holders, come.
Right, because I know they're aligned in some way.
So if their counselors here, is that what you said?
Yeah.
And would like to bring up any point for the town to consider. I can't take legal advice from your counsel, but what I can do is listen to what your counsel has to say and then be more than happy to research it on behalf of the Board with our legal counsel to see whether or not there's a valid point that is raised, and if so, bring it back to the Board for due consideration.
I would like that.
Good idea.
Very good, thank you.
My name is Dennis Murphy, I'm with Hill Law, and I've known UVA for many years. I helped them open their first establishment in Plymouth. You're dealing with an antiquated system of licensing. I know you've heard, this is not your first application for an alcohol license. Just to be really clear, they're looking for only wine, not a full liquor store, package store. Chapter 138, Section 17, is the statute enacted in 1937, so we're dealing with the end of prohibition during the Depression, where we came up with a system that has really not kept up with the times. So this system was one type of license, where you're going to drink alcohol on the premises. That's the license that UVA holds already. Another type, where you're going to buy the bottle and take it home and drink it, that's a retail license. In other states, they have figured this out, but in the patriarchal state of Massachusetts, we're still stuck in 1937 with the system we have. The technology, however, is such that now you can taste wine and buy it. You still have to have separate premises, and they've worked through all of that. So my first sort of point is that they already hold the license, and this is, it shouldn't count as a separate, it is, it can't be under the existing license. You will have to authorize them under the off-premises license. But it shouldn't count toward the town's quota, because it's the same people, the same business, the same establishment, operating in the same place in the Town of Mashpee. So it's not, I understand the Chair's argument about unfairness and all that, and the possibility that other people will want to hold two licenses, but this one is really kind of unique. I mean, they did give two examples, but I think those are the only two that they found on the Cape. So under that 1937 law, the way you count licenses is you get five automatic. Every town gets five, regardless of population. And then you get one per 5,000, or any percent of 5,000. So in the 2020 census, Mashpee was just over 15,000. So you get four licenses. This is not, I'm not talking about all alcohol. I'm talking about malt and wine. So you get four based on population, because you're over 15,000. When you're over 20, then you would get a fifth license. You get four plus the five that every town gets, so you get nine of the malt licensing. Now, I don't have insight into how many licenses have already been issued. I do have some familiarity for how it works in the ABCC world. They are still not where UVA is, where they recognize this hybrid model. We're working on that. There are places in Boston that operate a single establishment and have exactly the same kind of technology and the same program. We're not asking Mashpee to push the law in that direction. But I think what you could accomplish tonight is that, in your discretion, sitting as the licensing board, if there were a license available, would you issue it? And then leave it to the ABCC to figure out if that is, in fact, the case, based on my argument, that it really shouldn't count against the town's quota, because it's a separate license to the same-
It's a separate location, also.
Yes, it is, but that's also based on my legal advice. That's legally required. It's a separate LLC. All of that is because of how we structured liquor licenses, you know, 80-some-odd years ago. And so I think the point is that the, the Board knows how to deal with an application in applying your discretion about whether this is right for the Town of Mashpee. If it's right, and you decide that it's right, if there were a license available, I think you could vote on that tonight and decide that, on condition that there be a license available, I would vote to approve UVA for an off-premises license. If somebody somewhere at ABCC or elsewhere tells you, nope, you didn't have that authority, then so be it. We'll be back here again. And maybe there's more recent population data, but I don't see the change going up by more than 5,000 since 2020, so I don't think that's actually going to swing a license one way or another. It's, because we're just talking about the malt and wine.
I understand.
And that's one license per 5,000. And I don't have the number exactly, but it was just a shade over 15,000 in the 2020 census, if I'm remembering correctly. So don't do it because these are good people, and they've done it in Plymouth.
Oh, we love their concept. And the concept for the wine bottle is a great idea, no question. But that's not the issue.
Well, I mean, let's play it out. How would it work otherwise? Would we have to reapply? And how would we find out that a license is available? And what if somebody, could somebody get ahead of us in line? I mean, we did apply, and do we have to reapply every week until there's a license, or how does that work?
Well, why don't we do, Wayne? What, could they do something like that, Rodney? Okay. I mean, I would rather see this go to our legal and see if it's legal, for one, and if there's one available.
I don't know what kind of timeframe you're looking at, but certainly we could have an opinion rendered for the next meeting.
Okay.
So if you wanted to continue this until the next meeting, then I think it's well within the authority of the Board to do so.
I think that's a good idea. That means, that's a good idea. That way you wouldn't have to reapply. It will just be an open hearing. We won't decide.
So you've opened this, so I would just continue it and not close it, so that we can come back with the information after consulting with legal counsel.
That would be a good idea. Is that fair?
Thank you very much.
If you could just-
And Mashpee Commons is holding the space for us, and I'm sure they're fine with holding it for another two weeks.
And if you could just make your info available off-camera, we will be able to get in touch with you.
Yes, I will do.
Is the Board comfortable with that decision?
Yes, I am.
I'd like the motion to continue the public hearing for UVA Wine Bar.
Second.
John?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Tom? And I'm a yes.
Excellent.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great job.
Thank you.
Okay, 5:15, Public Hearing.
Pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 130, Sections 57 and 60, the Mashpee Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on the application filed on November 13th, 2024, by Richard J. Cook, Jr., DBA Papa Nissett Oyster Company, LLC, 19 Pembway, Mashpee, Mass., for renewal of Shellfish Grant Number 013. Renewal of Shellfish Grant 013, Papa Nissett Bay, 1.99 acres. Said hearing will be held on Monday, February 10th, 2025, at 5:15 PM in the Wacoit Meeting Room at Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass. Plans for the licensed area are on file at the Mashpee Selectmen's Office. You can submit comments and questions via email to selectboard@mashbma.gov prior to the meeting time and date.
Thank you, Michaela. Richard? Want to come up? Good evening.
Good evening.
And you are?
Richard J. Cook, Jr.
The Board-
19 Pembway in Mashpee.
You've had this license for a long time.
This permit is 10 years old.
10 years old?
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions? Any questions?
I do.
Yeah?
Thank you. My question is, you're applying for a 10-year permit.
Actually, from what I understand, from the Chris Avis, the Shellfish Constable, it is now a five-year renewal, according to the town.
Okay, and that's, that's a discrepancy. I noted that, that's why I was asking. So you're actually applying for a five-year, and there's no, okay, I understand completely.
A renewal of existing for five years.
Got it, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions?
Well, we have, and Chris Avis actually has the recommendation in there, so I don't-
Anyone from the audience? Have any questions, concerns? Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Yes.
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Now, I need a motion for the five-year.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Tom?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
I'm a yes, and-
Yes.
Very good. See you in five years.
Hopefully. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Okay, number four. Review, Request for Early Voting in Person, Recommended by the Board of Registars, Deborah K., Town Clerk. Good evening, Deborah.
Hi.
You want to state?
I'm sorry?
You want to state the reason why you're sitting there?
I'm here tonight because the Board of Registars recently met and voted to recommend that we offer early voting in person. This is a requirement in order to offer it to the voters of Mashpee. So, excuse me, I just flew in. So a week and a half ago, they voted, after conversation, to recommend that we offer early voting for the week leading up to May 3rd. I apologize, I don't have anything in front of me.
The proposed early voting schedule would be as follows. Monday, April 28th, 2025, through Friday, May 2nd, 2025.
Correct. That way, early voting won't interfere with town meeting. Oh, thank you. It won't interfere with town meeting. It'll operate 8:30 to 4:30, Monday through Friday. But it also gives us an opportunity, once early voting is done, we still have an opportunity to offer absentee voting for the week leading up to the election. Mass General Law does require that we stop early voting two days prior to the election. So I thought it was going to cause a lot of confusion if we only offered it for three out of five days. So I thought it was cleaner that we offer it the week before, and we still have absentee voting that week before.
Okay. Any questions? Debbie?
Motion to approve early voting, dates Monday, April 28th, 2025, through Friday, May 2nd, 2025, from 8:30 AM to 4:30 PM.
Second.
Second. Tom?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Okay. Number five, Review of Recommendation for Appointment of the Following. Board of Health, Dennis Ring, Member-at-Large. He's not here, apparently.
Did you, I didn't, I can't, I can really, I don't know if you were asking somebody to come up there or not.
No, not yet. We're looking for Dennis Ring, unless you're Dennis Ring. Oh, okay.
I'm mumbled down here.
Okay. We'll speak up.
Is your name Dennis?
What?
Is your name Dennis?
No.
Okay, we usually like to have them before us. Did he call in or anything? He's very well recommended, and I think we need him for the Board of Health. So I think I would-
I honestly don't know the answer to that question, whether he was asked to be here or not.
Okay.
I do know that both Mr. Liv-
I'm sorry, Mr. Livingston and Mr. Virgilio were on board with it and thought he was a good fit. They also provided the only information we had, because Ernie went on vacation after that, so we don't have his record of that, like we do of Mr. Livingston. But they're both recommended very highly.
Okay, thank you. So I would like to surpass the normal stand-in front of us and pass this gentleman through. So if I could have a motion?
Could I ask when the next Board of Health meeting is? I mean, is there a benefit to, is it crucial to do this tonight? Because I'd like to stay with policy or procedures the way we've been following them.
No, it's not essential that you have them in here. I think that they're meeting right after Ernie gets back, is my understanding.
Would it be before the 24th?
No, I think it's in, I don't want to, I don't want to speak out of turn. I don't, I'm not certain.
I know that there's a purpose of consistency.
Yeah, but there's a lack of members on the Board. Who has one resigned?
No, I understand, but it sounds as though there's not an emergency.
An emergency, okay.
Just table it till the 24th.
Okay.
Quick question, though. How many people are on the-
Three.
There's only three, and it's three openings, that's it?
There's no openings.
No, so this would be the third.
This would be the third.
That's why it's needed.
Definitely. But it doesn't sound like we're going to interfere. So motion to postpone to our next meeting.
Second.
Okay, Tom?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes. Deputy Sheriff Constable, Robic, Natural Resource Director, Harbor Master. Robert here.
That's just a formality as a result of his title.
Okay.
Or I should say his new title.
New title, okay.
Yes.
Nothing more than a formality.
That's correct. And he's on vacation this week.
Okay.
So I'm standing there.
Nice for him. Okay. Thank you. Chris?
Yep.
So I need a motion?
Motion to appoint Robert Tumino, Harbor Master, a deputy Shellfish Constable.
I'll second that.
John?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
And just for the board's clarity, that's just to stay consistent with the enforcement provisions within Massachusetts General Laws.
Okay. No problem. Good evening, David.
Hello.
Review of application for temporary sign permit. Mashpee Youth Baseball?
This is the same permit that was issued last year.
Last year, yeah. Okay. Anybody have any questions?
Mashpee Youth Ball? Is that just baseball?
Mm-hmm.
It used to be Little League. It's now called Mashpee Youth Baseball. Okay.
Okay, I need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
John?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. I'll wait for the next one for you. Okay?
Yes.
So you know what we're talking about.
I abstain.
Well, I'm a yes. Thank you. Review... Okay, so next one is Native Land Conservatory. And this has to do with road race? No.
That's the next in our packet.
That's the next one. I'm sorry.
Signs.
Okay. And this is... Is this a new one, Wayne? All we have is one sheet. Three by seven, two and ten, eighteen by twenty-four, April 4, 2025.
To be honest, I don't know.
Center Street?
No.
Okay. Since this is not until April, can we continue this one?
Sure.
Okay, is everybody okay? I need a motion to continue?
Motion to continue.
Second that motion.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you. Review of road race applicant. Annual Rock Heroes in Transition. This is an annual rock race through the towns on the Cape, and they're going to go through Mashpee.
Always boa advertising signage.
And everybody's... Okay. Need a motion? Any questions?
Motion approved.
Okay.
Second.
Tom?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
David?
Yes. Are you writing, John?
I haven't... Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Maybe?
Okay. Presentation of Town Managers FY 2026 Budget Recommendations.
Miss Madam Chair, you'll find in your packet the recommended operating budget for fiscal year '26. The majority of the adjustments are attributed to merit steps and/or cost of living adjustments consistent with the employment obligations and existing terms and conditions that the town has. The increase is 3.8% with no fixed costs or school costs, and the school increase is 3.9%, as referenced. The Cape Guard Tech cost is up 2.8% as there is one additional student. The town's fixed costs are increasing by 17%, and I can give you a further breakdown on that. This overall does reflect about a 6% increase. Operations includes all of the town agencies. And obviously, the cost in the majority of these is attributed to wages and salaries, and then also expenses, which are all broken down in your packet. Any specific increases that a department head asked for is articulated in the narrative that was previously submitted, but we can certainly provide you with that information if there are any questions. The operating budget, as far as expenses is concerned, is low compared to the personnel costs, but that includes things like supplies, utilities, contracts, et cetera. The balanced budget also includes funding anticipated warrant articles in May of 2025. And that considers also reclassifying a part-time plumbing inspector to full-time, reclassifying a substitute custodian, or I should say custodians, plural, to one full-time custodian, and reclassifying a part-time activities coordinator at the Senior Citizen Center for the Council on Aging. The wastewater management budget is transitioning to its long-term operating status, as required by the State Revolving Fund, which we refer to as the SRF financing. The operating costs of the wastewater facility will be an enterprise fund that will eventually be able to sustain itself through user rates and fees. Fiscal year '26 will be the first year that the wastewater management department will operate as an enterprise, and because rates have yet to be charged until the facility is operational, it will be fully subsidized through free cash. The intention is to reduce the amount of the subsidy annually by increased revenue from rates and fees collected as the number of users of the system increase until it becomes 100% self-sufficient and no longer a draw on the tax levy funding. The fixed costs, I break down if you have any questions on that. I do have the finance director on standby. This includes adjustments for rate costs and to cover modifications by staff, like, for instance, we sometimes have to plan for the unexpected, like if somebody starts with a single plan and goes to a family plan as a result of a change in status, we have to prepare for that. As noted, we don't know what the veterans' budget is going to be, but we did submit a good faith estimate. If this cost is not funded, the state will reduce the amount of state aid the town receives, so obviously, we don't want to tinker with that. Principal and interest inside debt increases are due to new street betterment projects that were permanently bonded in September of 2024. I do elaborate on that, and I think despite the initial projections potentially requiring a two-and-a-half override by 2022 or 2023, the town has been fortunate enough to avoid seeking an override for another year. I want to credit the sound fiscal policies and management and the finance team. We have maintained our AAA bond rating. We've avoided going to the tax levy, and we've also preserved the progressive and balanced capital improvement program, which I will get into next.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Any questions?
I do have a question.
Okay.
And I had several questions before. Those are clearer to me now. The only question I have, and I think this is for Dawn, is I'm on page five. If you go up to the principal outside two and a half, my question really has to do with, does this number reflect the 28.3% forgiveness that we receive each year? And what part of this is paid for by WIF, and is that reflected here? Or if you can take us through the procedure and process for it, that would be helpful.
Sure. So we did receive the loan schedules for Phase 1. It is broken down into two pools, and I do have the schedules here if you'd like them, and they do take the 28% into consideration in those loan schedules. So they reduce the amount of the loan by those amounts. The amount that is reflected in the budget for the outside debt is for the first year of Phase 1 wastewater debt. It is 100% covered through the WIF and the wastewater stabilization fund, which was the intention all along, was to fund it through those means. So what I have to do when I'm... When we're working on the tax recap, obviously, we voted it as a debt exclusion to go over and above the tax levy limit, but we actually will reduce the amount we raise in taxes because of the WIF and the wastewater stabilization funding that goes to pay the loan. So there will be no taxes for Phase 1 debt at this point. So what you see in the budget is fully covered through WIF, surcharge, and wastewater stabilization.
And that should be good for 1A, too, correct?
Yes. We believe that there should be sufficient funding, and I have numbers here if you'd like to see them, to cover Phase 1A of the debt as well. And we've said that all along, that we feel confident that the WIF and the wastewater stabilization funding will cover those debt payments for Phase 1 and 1A. Starting with Phase 2, that's when we'll actually, you know, unless another revenue stream comes to fruition, then that's when it would.
Okay. That's really helpful. I appreciate that.
That's great.
Yeah.
I would like to get copies of those after the meeting or through the Assistant Town Manager.
Sure, the debt schedule. And if you'd like, I can give everybody, along with the debt schedule, maybe just a little synopsis of how much we've collected in the WIF. That is, 2% of the tax levy that we raise is automatically... It's a surcharge, just like the CPA fund. It's accounted for in a separate fund, so it's not co-mingled with any other general funds. Same with the wastewater stabilization. That, as it was voted at town meeting, 75% of our occupancy tax goes directly into the wastewater stabilization and has to be used for wastewater purposes. So those funds are secure, they're separate, and they're to be used for the debt.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you for such a clear explanation. It's helpful to me, and I think it's helpful to anybody who's watching the meeting to understand how that's being taken care of.
And that was our intention all along, was to make sure that that debt was covered through those. And I know the Select Board worked hard to come up with ways to relieve some of the tax burden with the construction costs of the wastewater facility, and this will do a large portion of that, so.
Okay, yes. Thank you. Welcome.
Any other questions?
No.
David?
Not at this time.
Just a quick question. So the usage of the free cash you mentioned, Mr. Collins, about... That's for incidentals for the wastewater? Is that for this first year? Is that... Did I understand that correctly?
That's the first... I don't know if you want me to...
Is that for Phase 1 and 1A?
That's for the operation of the department. So it's the facility, it's the staffing, it's all the cost associated at this time, the estimated cost associated with running the operation. Our thought process with utilizing the free cash was to avoid asking for an override. We don't want to ask the taxpayers for any additional money, and we have the free cash available, so why not use it for a one-time purpose? And eventually, this will be a self-sufficient operation, so our goal is to get it to that point without burdening the rest of the taxpayers with that cost of the operation. For FY '26, I believe it's 1.9 million, a little over 1.9 million. We had the free cash available. We said that's a good use of the free cash, get us through the first year. They're still in the process of setting rates. I mean, you still have to get everybody hooked up, so there... It's, you know, going to take a bit to see what we have for revenue. And the intention is, if we can offset with free cash for a couple of years, it will be less and less each year, because as the rates come in and the fees come in, that will reduce what we need to add to the pot, I guess, if you will. And eventually, hopefully, it will be all user fees that cover the operation. That's the goal.
Great. That's... It was more of a clarification confirming, so that would be on the... This coming May with warrant articles, is correct?
Yes. It will be just like the kids' club when we do that separate article.
Perfect.
Yes.
I think it's great.
Good.
And kudos. That's great news and even better news.
Trying to relieve the taxpayers as much as we can.
Exactly.
That was good. You were prepared, well-prepared.
We try to be.
Okay. Presentation of capital improvement program. CIP's Five-Year Plan.
Under the CIP.
Thank you, Dawn.
Committee, we had several items, multiple items, I should say, that were requested. And you should have a three-page sheet that is the CIP summary and presentation to the Finance Committee. And on the far-left column is the department, and under the department is the breakdown of the specific item. You will see to the right of that the department request, and then what the CIP committee proposed as far as its recommendation. And to the far-right, to keep it simple, you'll see the funding source, whether it was free cash, whether it was not applicable because it wasn't recommended, or whether it was MCAT funds or ambulance receipts, or in certain situations, it might be a debt exclusion or capital stabilization. But whatever it is, you will see the breakdown on the far-right. So for the viewing public, just to give you a brief overview, conservation requested $55,000, and it was recommended to approve 50. Under DPW, the requested amount was $743,569, and it was recommended at $358,569. The transfer station, $26,000, recommended $26,000 under the fire department. The request was $1,262,000. That was what was recommended. Information Technology, $106,000 was requested, $106,000 was recommended. Under Natural Resources, the request was $354,488. The recommendation was $144,732. Under Planning and Construction, this is the big one, $42,514,000. The recommendation was $42,039,000. Police, the request was $386,900. The recommendation was the same. Under the school, the request was $155,485. The recommendation was $155,485, the same figure. Under wastewater, the total requested amount was $39,430,000, and the recommendation was $26,950,000. And then you see the totals, and I should just make a note that the Mashpee Wakeby wastewater system construction conditionally approved for recommendation as October 2025 warrant article on the condition of SRF funding and a debt exclusion. And what's that?
And it's legal.
And it's legal. I've already received a legal opinion. It's legal.
You can do that. Okay. Not everybody got everything that they wanted, which I sat in on the meetings, and what is critical and what the town needs is what we went for and voted on.
I think this not only meets the pressing mission-critical needs, which is not to suggest that some of the other requests were not items that had a valid concern, but obviously, we're trying to balance as a committee, and I'm only one member, I don't want to speak for the rest of the committee members, but I think, generally speaking, it was, in addition to unanimous, it was a matter of striking a balance between what we can put off versus what we need to do immediately.
Right. No question. Any questions?
And the attachment also includes the Five-Year Plan. You'll see a lot to be determined, because we just don't have the figures. It's difficult to come up with a number for a vehicle, never mind some of the other items, three or four or five years from now. But what we try to do is have the department head come in with their figure as soon as they know. they know what that is, in a good-faith estimate. So as soon as we have some numbers, we'll plug those in and update the five-year plan. If you have any questions regarding the operating budget, or the CIP, or the five-year plan, as always, you're always invited to call, or to visit, or however you wish to communicate and ask a question.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Town Manager.
I just, yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to say, I think so many questions have been answered, both via the CIP and in the presentations to the Finance Committee, that I think that's why we're sitting here, and we no longer have questions, because we've seen those. One of the things that I would like to mention, because I know it's very high, is the $37,150,000 for the Police Department. And I know, after sitting in in meetings, budget meetings, two of us from the Finance Committee and I went and had a full tour of the Police Department, and I hope they're going to make a video of that whole Police Department available to people, because it's a necessary expense. Anybody who, you drive by it, and it looks, it doesn't look bad from the outside, but once you get in it and see the complete building, it becomes so obvious that this is a dire need for the community. So I just want to reinforce that.
By the way, as I think all of you are aware, I'm not on social media, I want nothing to do with it, but there was supposedly some info out there about, ironically, the Portsmouth-New Hampshire Police Department, and the cost possibly being between 24 and, I think it was 30 million or something like that. And I know the police chief in Portsmouth, New Hampshire. So I reached out to him this weekend, and I said, I know you're building new police station, are you building it for 24 to 30 million? He said, where the hell did you get that figure?
Social media.
He said, I didn't say social media.
But that's where it was.
Yeah, well, I didn't get it from social media. I got it indirectly. But anyway, I said, and by the way, he only visits me in the summertime, he doesn't visit me in the wintertime. But, long story short, he said, that figure is 42 million plus and climbing. And so he says, I don't know where you got that. So the only thing that I would caution people on is, number one, post-COVID prices did climb. Number two, the supply chain has impacted pricing. So those are the things that actually do affect us. But the other thing I want to point out to the Select Board is, we wanted to make sure that there was a contingency to cover anything that was to surface that was absolutely critical. In other words, we did not want to return to you or to the voters and say, oh, we need a supplemental budget. So my optimistic hope would be, we could come in under budget and and have a functional facility and a professional facility, but at the same time, we just wanted to make sure that you had the worst-case scenario in terms of the numbers.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may, I was actually just want to echo what Michaela's comment was. I mean, you know, I'm sure we all seen a lot of comments on social media.
Oh, so you're one of them.
So, I have read it. So, but one other point to Mr. Collins' comment was, don't believe everything you see on social media.
Or nothing that you see.
And, but I wanted to just stress the urgency to get this done, because it is antiquated, it's, it needs to be, you know, accomplished, and hopefully, the people will understand that when it's unanimously supported, there's a reason for it.
Right.
By the way, we are working on a list of all of the issues, so that it'll be ready for public dissemination. Also, I've mentioned in the past that the cell block area is failing state inspections, the air quality system is poor, there's been a sewer backup in the locker room that has resulted in some unsanitary conditions. Beyond that, the building itself is dysfunctional. I've mentioned the visiting rat that has been downstairs in the basement that we have a picture of, that I'll put as the star of the show at town meeting. But in all seriousness, any person that would like to have a tour of the facility, we will arrange it. For the general public, for any Select Board member, for any FinCon member, or for anybody that is interested, we will arrange a tour so that you can see for yourself. Seeing is believing.
That's right.
And that's where I'll leave it.
Very good. Next one is just, I I put this on because everybody's talking about the the closure of the Pecasset Mental Health Center. I know Michaela's county government meetings are talking about it, and and everybody else has been chiming in, and I think we should have a letter drawn up from us to Governor Healey in opposition of the proposed closure of the mental hospital. Yes, sir?
Madam Chair, I try not to get involved in these issues, but this is one-
It is.
-that is right to the core. I do not understand the closing of that facility.
Nobody does.
And I generally let you vote your your conscience. I would strongly recommend that the Board voice their opinion on this subject. It is a critical facility in this area.
No question.
And at a time where mental health is in such a crisis, not have that facility almost appears irresponsible.
It's criminal.
Well, I won't say that.
Well, it is.
If I may?
Uh huh.
In addition to the closing of the facility, there's also the proposal to cut caseworkers by almost 50%. And I think any letter that we put together really has to acknowledge the important importance of the caseworkers, the vital role that they play in keeping people at home, keeping people who have the greatest needs functioning. And I think we have to address both of those issues in order to maintain some amount of mental health facilities here.
Any questions on that? No, we're okay. Do I need a vote? Do we need a vote?
Probably.
Okay, a motion?
I would vote maybe to authorize myself and Select Board member Juan Carlos and I to work on getting this together and get it out.
Thank you.
So moved.
Okay. Tom?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you. That's a good idea. Okay. Thank you for that. Public comment, Wendy Williams.
Wendy Williams, it's on Isurus Road.
You need to take the microphone.
Can you grab one of us?
Right.
Oh, just a-
You can take the whole stand.
All right. I'm just used to standing up when I speak. Just as a little perspective, this isn't what I meant to talk about, but for some reason, the people up in Boston always pick on Pecasset. I don't know why, but 40 years ago, when I was a kid reporter at the Cape Cod Crimes, I covered this story repeatedly that they tried to close that facility. So, I don't know, maybe we're just not on the radar screen down here, maybe they think we're all rich. I don't know why, but instead of closing that, we should open a couple more. That's what we need. So my address today, which I actually wrote out this time, keep it concise, speak truth to power. After all, that's what journalists do. All the little lefties are running around down in DC screaming this, and frankly, in this particular case, I agree with them. President Musk is out of control. He even wants to rid us of the judiciary because he doesn't like their decisions. And why not? After all, he grew up under apartheid. President Musk Trump definitely does not believe in equality. Speak truth to power is the way we proclaim that we didn't vote for a megalomaniac. Thanks, little lefties, for speaking out. This is the American way of life. You gotta listen, you don't have to like it, but you gotta listen. So why is our own special Trumpian lefty, our own precious Mary Wagon, refusing to allow people to speak at her planning board? I should note here that "her" is in quotes, because that's what she said, because she is actually no different from President Musk Trump, two Ps in the same pod. She wants to control and dominate because she thinks she's better than the rest of us. So did they down in Washington. On a January agenda, she wrote that the public comment could only happen at her discretion. I don't think she really understands how democracies work. We don't go to the Queen and beg an audience. The Queen has to listen to what we have to say. She has to. If she doesn't want to, then don't be Queen anymore. When I spoke out about her dictatorship last Monday, she immediately got up and whined that she had never, ever refused to allow people to speak. And yet, two days later, she did exactly that. At last week's meeting, she refused to put public comment on the agenda at all. Previously, she had had what, said it would only happen at her discretion. Last week's meeting, there was no opportunity for public comment at all. And in fact, she told people who had apparently showed up to make a public comment that they would not be able to speak. So no one was allowed to speak at Her Majesty's meeting last week. This is against all the best advice of people with way more experience than she has, who have encouraged her over and over and over again. You are not in charge. You are here to listen and learn from the people. How funny, since she was the one who orchestrated all those amazing public comment things a year ago or two years ago, some of which I thought were pretty funny. But now that she's in charge, she won't let anyone say anything.
Okay, Wendy, please wrap it up.
I'm almost done.
Okay.
This is to announce that a recall effort is currently underway. It will take a lot of energy and a lot of motivation, but believe me, there is more than enough motivation at this point. Wagon is a nightmare that won't go away. Even when we wake up in the morning, she's still there. She's been on the planning board for nearly 20 years. It's time for her to go, make room for new people.
Thank you. You can stand or sit.
I'll stand, Miss Barrows.
Okay. All right.
You all know who I am. I'm here to address the pickleball issue again. It's not funny. You don't live there, and everybody knows what's going on. What have you done? Anything? Because I have not seen anything being done about this noise. I haven't been talking to you, I went in and asked if I could get on the agenda so we could talk and do something about this, and I was told, no, we're not going to put you on there. So I've waited, maybe it was just that month, it's been a couple months. I want to know what's going to be done about this. You guys put a park in there that shouldn't have gone in there to begin with, and it's still a problem. You had two sound studies done, nothing was done, even though in the results, it says you need to put in one of them, 10 to 15-foot wall up to mitigate the sound. Nothing has been done. All the stuff that you did do, in fact, what sheeting is up there for soundproofing or whatever, did nothing. And I know you paid money to do all that stuff, and you were well-versed before that, that this wasn't going to work. I spent my money to go down to Florida before you guys even put the idea that that's what they were doing. I didn't say do that, I said, they had a problem down there. And somehow, they got in there, and you ordered the stuff, whatever. I said, no, don't do it. So any money that was spent then to do that was a waste of money. And you did two sound studies that wasn't even on pickleball, and they both said, you need to put a wall in and close that up, at least 10 to 15 feet. And they even said that the stuff that you put up was making the sound go better. I have it all in the reports that you did and underlined. I can read them to you if you like. But I want to know what's being done. I haven't seen anything. In fact, I happened to see John Cotton's little public speaking on some talk show or whatever, where he's sitting there saying that the problem in Mashpee is solved. I don't know where that came from, but it hasn't even been touched. And everybody, it's just me that's speaking to you right now, because a lot of my neighbors won't come in, but they all signed a petition that they wanted something done a long time ago. But we're going on seven years. And supposedly, during the rain, if the people don't go in there, I've sat there and watched people playing in the rain. I've seen them playing at night. I actually watched somebody blowing off the courts from the snow. So it does not stop. And I get no peace at my house. I'm asking you now to have a meeting, I want this addressed, I'm asking you. I'd like this addressed. You've spent enough money that didn't go anywhere with this, you don't have a problem spending 50 grand or close to it to re-surface that court, so money shouldn't be an issue. Even in both of your reports, they said that this park, the whole court needs to be enclosed, or a wall putting up with sound-absorbing material. Absolutely nothing's been done. I'm tired of it, and the summer's coming. And I've witnessed, I've sat there and counted how many cars go into that park. On a cold winter's day at 15 degrees, 40 cars in one day went to that park. And just in a morning in the summer, over 200 cars in and out of that park, because I sat there and counted them, and from all different states. And you're not even taking in any money. I go to the beach, I gotta buy, I gotta have a sticker for the beach and pay money for it. These people from out of state aren't even paying one dime towards anything in that park, but I have to sit here and pay my taxes every quarter, and not a thing is being done with that. I hate coming in here, I hate coming in here and not having a happy face, but I'm done. I'm asking you right now, I want a meeting, all of you here are listening to me, I'm saying it to everybody here, and I want it fairly soon, if I can, before this summer starts up, and I want something done, or it is going to go to court. It's affecting my health, so it's a health issue with me, and I have consulted with lawyers, I haven't hired anybody or done anything, so I can still talk to you, and we can take care of it or do something.
Thank you, Ernie.
This is wrong.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. I'm just really hoping that you're going to call me in the next couple of weeks with a meeting, so we can set this up and we can talk about it and figure out something. Appreciate your time.
Razon Reports, anybody?
Charter review, we wanted to ask for a placeholder for two articles. We've moved forward far enough to bundle a few things together, so there's a few different articles within the charter that we're going to put in one article, and then there's another article we're requesting a place saver for for 3 and 6, and subject to more information coming. We are going to hold a public hearing, March 3rd and March 24th, so I'd like to invite the general public to come attend those meetings for- the general public to come attend those meetings for a public hearing on the charter amendments that we're recommending as a committee, and look forward for community input at those public hearings.
Thank you, David. Anyone else? Water quality updates. Anybody?
I'm just glad that we have all of that covered by WIF stabilization-
Exactly.
-and 28.3%.
Exactly. Town manager updates.
Selectman Whedon articulated it right on point regarding charter review, and I'm glad that we've been able to get that to the point where it's at. And I know Mr. Miller, who's in the audience, is a respected member, and-
Greg?
Yeah. We've got all kinds of participation.
Yes.
So, at any rate, we're getting there. And on the recent storm, believe it or not, it's caused a situation where at the next Select Board meeting, we'll be seeking authorization for deficit spending because of the snow and ice. And obviously, we don't carry a lot of money in that account for reasons that are recommended to us.
I need it.
But to get you prepared for that, so that we can get the next round of, so, I'm saying.
If you don't mind, just to add, you brought up snow removal and DPW compliments.
Yes.
I seen it on social media. Again, I know we're short-staffed, I know they're short-staffed, but what they're doing, amazing. Well done.
It was a really good job, considering our staffing shortages. I understand that ideally, the walkways down Great Neck Road South would be done immediately. They weren't, for obvious reasons. We get to these things as quickly as possible, and they go by priority, but they are doing a very good job under some challenging circumstances.
They did a great job.
Yeah. You did.
And on a personal note, congratulations.
Yes, David.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
John?